Our first speaker today is a gentleman who I know very well. I was blessed to work with him in my former life when I spent some time with the city of Oakwood. Bill Duncan was a very successful CPA and had his own firm, Thorn Lewis &amp; Duncan, and then for some unexplained reason, as if he wasn't already busy enough, he decided he wanted to give back to his community and in 2003 ran successfully for a seat on Oakwood City Council. Seven years later, in 2010, at a moment of weakness, he allowed his fellow council members to nominate and unanimously elect him to serve as Oakwood Mayor, and he remains in that position today. When you think about today's political climate, his tenure as Mayor is really a remarkable accomplishment and speaks volumes of how Bill has conducted himself as an elected official for more than 20 years. Bill is a proud graduate of Wright State University and has served as Treasurer and Member of the Board of Trustees, the Alumni Association, the WSU Foundation, and its Planned Giving Council. So, anyone who's getting a tax refund and would like to pass that along to Wright State University, talk to Bill. Bill is former President of the Greater Dayton Mayors and Managers Association and currently serves on its Board. He's President of the Hundred Club of Dayton, which is a charitable organization that supports public safety officers and their families. As I mentioned, I had the honor of privilege of working very closely with Bill when I was a member of the Oakwood staff, and I can say this without reservation, that he is uniquely qualified to talk about how to be an effective City Council member. Bill?
Thank you for that kind introduction. I always tell people, the reason I've stayed Mayor as long as I have is no one in Oakwood wants the job. But we have two Oakwood Council members here today. I want to point them out. We have Councilmember Healy Jackson and Councilmember Lee Turbin. And so, please reach out to them because one of them, I think, does want the job. But, take a quick poll. How many of you in the cities you represent have a, do a direct election for the Mayor as opposed to having the Council, you know, select the Mayor? So, the people with their hands raised are direct elections? Okay. And how many have a Council selecting the Mayor? Okay, so we have, yeah, fewer amounts. And that's what we are in Oakwood. All of our Councilmembers run for a four-year term for City Council. They're staggered, three in one election cycle, two the other two. And then, the new five-member Council each January selects the Mayor and the Vice Mayor for a two-year term. And so, I'm in that two-year term right now, and I just got re-elected last November along with Healy, and Lee was elected two years earlier than that. And so, when I talk about, you know, what the role of City Council is, and it's very important to us right now, I mean, our main role is to hire a City Manager. Because we're, I think, is everybody here a City Manager, former government? Okay. Yeah. So, we have, no? I'm sorry. Okay. And, so, the Managers like to call that a weak Mayor form of government. You know, I never accepted that. But, and I always would tease Nan Whaley, she always thought she was a strong Mayor when, in fact, she's the Manager Council form of government as well. So, we had that ongoing debate. But, our main role is to hire a City Manager. And that's a very important thing for us because our City Manager just announced last week that he's going to be retiring after 22 years as City Manager of Oakwood, and the previous 10 as our City Engineer. So, we're in the process of starting to go through that. And so, when I'm looking at our Charter, and I think, and I've looked at most charters in the area, not 100%, and they're all written slightly different, but they're all almost slightly the same. You know, there's more, they all talk about that, and they talk about the role of Council and the role of the Mayor and the Vice Mayor, if you all have one. The Council hires the Manager, and the Manager hires everybody else. So, I'm looking forward to how the New Lebanon affair works its way out through the courts because they decided that, well, we're just going to whack everybody. So, sometimes you, when you're on Council, you want to whack everybody, but you can't. So, we'll see how that turns out. When I became the Mayor, I've got to get my notes here. I'm not going to read all these things, so they were notes for myself. When I became Mayor, the former Mayor sent me, sent me an email, and it was sort of like tips, and Judy Cook was her name, and Judy was sort of like my mom. She just turned 90, she's going to be 91 this year. She's still very active in our community through the Regional Suburbs Committee, and she has just always been a great community leader. She was active in a lot of groups downtown, you know, with Human Service Levy and those things. But she said, "You always need to treat the Councilmembers with respect." That seems like, you know, a no-brainer, but sometimes, you know, people don't do that as much as they should. I think that when we, when we have our meetings, and the other thing that's different, that was one of the other questions asked, how many of you are five-member councils versus seven-plus? The fives? We've got a handful of five-member councils, but the seven-member councils are most of the rest? Okay. And some, I think, even go eight or nine. I think Miami'sburg, aren't you like eight or seven? You're seven with, plus the Mayor, right? Yeah. So, there's a few like that. There's a big difference in how you deliberate on issues in your city when there's a five people in the room versus seven. It's, you know, the social dynamics and the interaction among Councilmembers is very difficult. I think the five-member councils are frankly easier to arrive at a consensus, but that's not, that's not always the case. But, no matter whether you're five or seven-plus, you know, you want to have all of your members, you know, feel like they got to participate in the decision and try to arrange that even if that wasn't your first choice, you know, you're willing to go along with, you know, what the majority decides. I think that the other thing that she told me to do is, whenever you're at an event and you all get to go to events, you know, ribbon cuttings and community events, and if your other Councilmembers are there, introduce them, like I just did this morning here. I've learned that lesson very well. Because whether you're a Mayor or a Vice Mayor or a Councilmember, almost all of us in this room and for other councils, we've all gone through the asking for people to sign your petition, turning it in, raising money, putting yard signs in your, in people's yards, putting together your campaign literature for either direct mail or hanging it on the door, door handles. And, and so, from that standpoint, we're all, we're all in it the same way, regardless of what you think is best for your city. And all of us are, we're community servants and we are, and we're cheerleaders for our city. You know, we all ran for probably a different reason, but we all ran because we love the city and community that we live in. And so, you want to present, to the extent that you can, you know, a common front on issues, dealing, and dealing with citizens. You want to be respectful to your citizens when they come to the Council meetings for the, what we call the Visitor Section, and I think everybody does that a little bit different. And you sometimes get some strange people that want to address Council, but you want to give those folks, you know, the respect that they deserve because they've thought enough about an issue to want to come to City Council. You've probably all participated in meetings where there might be a reporter sitting in the back, or there might not be anybody. We used to always have somebody from Dayton Power and Light come in because they wanted to know immediately if somebody was complaining about the way they chopped down trees, you know, along the power lines. But, but anyway, you want to give those folks the respect that they deserve. I think that a lot of Council meetings where, at the end of the meeting generally, sometimes they're at the beginning, the individual members will talk about, you know, we call them Council Comments. It could be whatever a Councilmember wants to talk about. We don't really put time limits on that, but most people, you know, keep it short and sweet. But letting those, letting those people feel like whatever community event that they have gone to is something that wants to be reported, and that's, that's something I think that helps build the camaraderie and the interaction between the Councilmembers in that I would call more of an informal session as opposed to when we're actually, you know, passing legislation. And 90% of our legislation is, okay, it's time to fix the roads, okay, you know, it's time, it's time to pass a budget, and those things don't necessarily, they're not necessarily controversial, but you want to have that ability that you can relate to the folks in the community. You know, if any of you in a lot of the City Man, there's been a lot of turnover in City Managers in this region, and there's going to be probably more as, as the older folks like me are going to hit the, hit the trail. But, I just read, as we started our deliberations on replacing of a Councilmember, of a City Manager, the OML, Ohio Municipal League, has a really good document on, you know, an effective process for hiring a new, a new City Manager. So, if you, if you have that, that's something that I would, Kent Scarrett's going to be here this afternoon and dovetailing on Jay's comments. This is a really good group of speakers. It's probably one of the best we've ever had, and I'm looking forward to sticking around and listening to some of them today, and maybe all of them. So, before I have to go to the Mayors and Managers meeting in Germantown tonight. So, okay. One of the things that you will find that is contentious is pretty much anything related to land use. When I first got on Council, one of the things that just surprised me more than anything is the number of people in your community that want to tell other people what to do with their property. And, and that frankly shocked me. Again, Oakwood is, is pretty much 98% residential, and so, we don't have a lot of what I would call contentious land issue rules. But, I do want to tell you a story about the longest City Council meeting in Oakwood history. It has only recently been passed by the city of Centerville. He beat me by two hours, I think. We started at 7:30 and ended at 2:00 AM. So, the issue was developing condominiums at what we call Point Oakwood. It's where the old Sugar Camp property was, it used to be owned by NCR. And the developer wanted to build condominiums at the top of the hill, Shonton Far Hills, if you're familiar with that area, and more condominiums at the bottom of the hill, which you can't really see from the top of the hill, but it looked pretty much straight north where the old River Playing Fields used to be and the old River Park. And so, we start our meeting at 7:30. The place was packed, standing room only, out in the, in the lobby. We, what the developer called condominiums, you know, the citizens were saying, "Those aren't going to be condominiums, they're going to be apartments because they're not going to sell them, they're going to keep them all themselves." And then it went from apartments to, "It's going to be student housing for the rowdy UD kids that like to, like to ride every St. Patrick's Day." And then it went from there, "Well, now, now it's going to be Section 8 housing." I go, "What are you people talking about?" And at 2 o'clock, we finally finished our deliberations, and the City Council voted yes to build them at the top of the hill, but no to build them at the bottom of the hill. So, what happened? The developer sued us because we voted no for the bottom of the hill, and the residents sued us because we voted yes at the top of the hill. So, obviously, that was maybe not our finest hour in trying to arrange, come to consensus. But, what was interesting about it is Channel 2 and Channel 7 were there. Channel 2 actually had a shift change around midnight, the one reporter that had been there left and got replaced by, by the other person. Channel 7, they had these things, like their video cards or something that recorded this thing. They went through about four of them, they ran out of those because they had filled them up. I then went, after the meeting, both of them wanted me to get wired up and do the soundbite for the morning news, and my soundbite was sort of to the effect of, "Can't we all just get along?" So, the next morning, at 6:00 AM, I, in my bed, I wake up, our TV would come on, that was our version of the alarm clock to the news, and I look up, and there's my face on TV. And that's something you don't want to see, is your face on TV at 6:00 in the morning. And, and as I joked, I says, "Well, at least I wasn't doing a perp walk." So, what happened is, and where is Jay? Has he disappeared on? Oh, he's in the back. A year, if not 18 months later, you know, because we're pending litigation, you know, people were starting to do deposition and all that jazz, it was Jay Weiskircher from the city of Oakwood that convinced the two sides to mediate and resolve their differences. And so, we were, and it took that long, but without Jay, we would have never got that issue resolved. So, so the only thing, and I love telling that story, and now I won't be able to, next, next time, Wayne Davis will have to talk about the sheets. And I told him, "The only thing you needed to do to get everybody happy was build a roundabout there." So, and he didn't want to do that either. So, anyway, so maybe he'll tell you a little bit about his pending litigation, although he'll probably say, "I cannot comment due to pending litigation." But, you know, so I'm looking forward to reading how that plays out as well. The other thing is, I want you to, let's see, okay, yes. I want to talk a little bit about communication, and I've got something here, email, email communications. And so, we had an issue last year where we had a property tax renewal levy on our ballot. We mailed our paperwork down to Montgomery County to the fourth floor as opposed to mailing it to the county on the basement, in the basement. And so, no one from the county auditor could walk down four flights of stairs to present our petition with the Board of Elections, and it was our fault. But, we screwed up, and so, our levy was not going to be on the ballot for last November. So, it was going to expire, it was about a million-dollar, million-one tax levy, so we're going to lose this. So, the Council got together immediately, and rather than, you know, "Well, let's, let's fire somebody," we says, "No, it was an honest clerical error, mistake. We'll put it on the ballot here in March." But we knew we had the revaluation going on, and so what we did is we waited until we got our revaluation, and what was an original 3.75 mil levy with revaluation, we could basically raise the same amount of money with a 2.4, 2.41 mil levy. So, we put that on, on the ballot, and it passed. And not everybody's levies passed here last March, but, so our City Manager, he sends an email to Council, and he, he had broken down the pass rates on each of our eight precincts. We have eight precincts in the city of Oakwood. And in seven out of the eight, the levy passed as, one, one was as high as, you know, 61.39, but there was one precinct that the levy failed, 49 to 51. And so, we have a 32-member Budget Review Committee that we meet, and if any of you have something similar to that, I think it's a great way to get feedback from the community. If you don't, I would urge you to consider doing that. We have four members from each of our eight voting precincts to try to get a reasonable amount of diversity of thought, opinion, whatever, but representing the entire city. And, so what happened after we sent that email out, and we sent it to our Budget Review Committee to let them know, and somebody wrote, replied, you know, hit the Reply All button, so it went to all 32 members, and it says, "The voter turnout was 32%. The vote was, overall, the, overall city was 56.44 in favor, so that was, that was good." One of the members wrote back to everybody and said, "I suggest the city withhold all services to Precinct B." They were the ones that voted, voted no, 49.51. And so, you know, just one sentence, but he went, it went to everybody. See, there's only like one sentence on this whole page. And so, another member replies to all, "Well, sorry, I missed it," and he was in Precinct B. Did not intend, oh, I'm sorry, this, yeah, so he says, "Suggest, suggest the city withhold services to everybody." And so then, they said, "What we should do maybe is poll our," yeah, here we go, I've got the order now. "Maybe a more mature response would be to spend some time in Precinct B, learning what the concerns are. I believe this is the first occasion that a negative vote won in that area. Also, look how close it was, almost 50.50. Maybe get out the vote would be a better solution." Well, the guy who wrote the first email then replies, "I meant it as humor." And so, he then gets a response back from Mr. Precinct B. He says, "Well, sorry, I missed that." He didn't get the humor, there was no little emoji, you know, behind it. Maybe that was the difference, I don't know. "Did not intend to offend anyone." Actually, I too was surprised, be very lean to the, to the no. And then, I guess the point of it is, when you're on Council, I suspect a lot of you all communicate among yourselves back and forth, you, and the two things to be wary of is, when you type a sentence or a paragraph, not everybody's going to understand you, what you really mean when you say that. So, I'm not saying don't use email, but I'm just saying, think, think long and hard before you hit the send button, especially if it's a controversial issue. I would almost say, type it, and then go to bed, wake up the next day, and if you still feel that, then you can send it. But, and the other thing you always also have to keep in the back of your mind, and we're going to have a speaker on this later, is, you know, 90% of your emails are subject to, to the sunshine law, you know, are, I can't wait for the picker oak guy to come because he'll, he'll probably even tell you, well, even if, even if your in-house counsel or somebody says attorney-client privilege, blah, 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 confidential, you know, that may or may not be eligible for the sunshine rule. I know last, two years ago when we had this, we got into a big, long discussion about sunshine laws, and I think it's always better to err on the side of full disclosure as opposed to, "I'm sorry, I can't give you that," you know, pending litigation. But, so that's, I would, I would urge you to just think about that as you communicate with other members of Council. I then have, okay, what else? Ah. On media relations, there's a speaker on media relations, and we'll be able to do that, you know, way better than me, but I would also, I would also say that whatever New Lebanon's doing on media relations has been piss poor. So, we normally try to communicate our, our correspondence through our City Managers, or maybe, or maybe the Mayor speaking on behalf of Council. I think it's always important to try to, you know, show a united front on your communications with media. People at the Dayton Daily News are lazy. They will sit in their house, they'll watch the videos of our Council meetings, and then maybe two days later, they'll write a story about anything they saw on the video. They rarely come to the Council meetings, they rarely interview the members of Council, but I think that it's important to try to, you know, keep, keep that, you know, common front. It's our city, and we're here to help, and we want to do, we want to do the best we can for our city. My last, or, well, I have two finals, or, I've got one more point, and then I have two final stories. I want you to write down Article 18, Section 3 of the Ohio Constitution. And it is very short, it's only about one, one sentence, and it is, "The municipal powers of local self-government. Subject to the requirements of Section 1 of Article 5 of this Constitution, municipalities shall have authority to exercise all powers of local self-government and to adopt and enforce within the limits such local police, sanitary, and other similar regulations as are not in conflict with general laws." This is known as the Home Rule Amendment. It was passed in 1912 to the Ohio Constitution and has not been amended since. And the reason it was passed is all the way back in 1912, local governments distrust the Ohio General Assembly. And since I've been Mayor, the Ohio General Assembly has done nothing to lessen my mistrust. So, this allows local governments to run their cities the way they want to run it without, you know, Columbus thinking that one size fits all is, is the answer. Now, this came up, this came up primarily from my role, was when we were arguing with the state about, you know, local municipal income taxes. And I know, I know there's a few cities that are here today that do not have a municipal income tax, but I think the vast majority of you do. And there's a group in Columbus that they don't think, not only they don't think we should have an Ohio state income tax, they don't think we should have an Ohio municipal income tax. And our income tax scheme, and I love that word, scheme, because if any of you remember Al Gore, everything was a risky scheme. And, but in England, in the United Kingdom, scheme, their, their Social Security version, they call it a pension scheme. So, that word means something totally different in Europe than it does here. And I learned that when going through all this research. But, I would encourage you to support the Ohio Municipal League in their efforts to lobby on behalf of all the cities and municipalities, and, and I think you'll, you'll see for sure why you need to do that when Kent Scarrett comes and speaks to you all this afternoon. So, I have, how much time do I have left? Am I getting close to the hook?
We've got 15 minutes.
Oh, well, then, we're, you're going to get done early, so that way we can, yes.
What was that Article number?
Article 18, Section 3 of the Ohio, of, and if you, you could probably just Google "Home Rule Amendment" in Ohio, and it'll take you right there. So, I wanted to tell two, two final stories, and, and again, I'll, I'll open up for questions if anybody has some, and I'll be here most of the day if you want to, you know, talk to me later. There was, I got this from, it was one of our former Councilmembers, her, her father sent this to me after a contentious meeting that we had in, in Oakwood with citizens. I don't remember what the issue was, I don't think it was, you know, our, our, our story about the 2:00 AM meeting, but it goes back to 1824. And the history lesson is, in 1820, James Monroe was running for a second term as President, and he ran unopposed. I think that's the only time that ever happened. But, in 1824, there was a contentious election. There were three candidates. There was Andrew Jackson, and there was John Quincy Adams, and then there was Henry Clay. And so, they had the election, no one won a majority of the electoral votes. So, it went to the House of Representatives to be decided. Each state had one vote, and everyone was lobbying Henry Clay, since he was the Speaker of the House, he had the most sway in, for the states. And so, what happened is Henry Clay said to Quincy Adams, says, "If you make me Secretary of State, I'll throw all my votes towards you and keep Andrew Jackson out of the White House." And Andrew Jackson lost in 1824, and it was called the corrupt bargain. Well, while this election was unfolding in the, in the fall of 1824, there was a fellow by the name of John Dickerson, and he was a writer or a reporter for the Raleigh Register and North Carolina State Gazette. I've never heard of either one of those papers. But, he, he, and this is described as, "It's one of the greatest arguments for the silent majority in political history," and it's, it's a rural, it's a rural analogy because most of the country back then was agrarian. But, so, try to take these words that he's using and put it into contemporary United States history, current United States history, but he says, "Because a half dozen grasshoppers under a hedge make the field ring with their impurnate cheek, chink, while the great cattle repose beneath the shade, chew the cud and are silent. Pray do not imagine that those who make the noise are the only inhabitants of the field. Let us not, brother editors, fancy that those who make the most noise..." Let us not, brother editors, fancy that those who make the most noise are the only people interested in the great national questions now pending. No, many of the wisest and most intelligent men of our country are chewing the cud in silence, anxiously awaiting the results." So, this could be anything from a land use issue in local government all the way up to what we have to do and decide in, in November of this year. And I thought, you know, and while it's interesting reading how people wrote back in eighteen twenty-four, I think the lesson still holds true today. And then, my final comment, David McCullough, you know, is a famous writer, he passed away here about a little over a year ago, I think. And, uh, he, uh, he's the one that wrote the Wright Brothers book, you know, he wrote a book on, uh, Harry Truman and, you know, George Washington, he's written a half dozen books. I've read almost every one of them, he's just an excellent writer. And, he came to Dayton to promote his Wright Brothers book. And I had the opportunity to issue a proclamation, welcome him to Dayton and, you know, because it was the Wright Brothers, Hawthorne Hill, city of Oakwood. And, so what I did is I decide, and I did this on my dime, not the city's dime, I went down to Warped Wing Brewery and bought him a six-pack of warped wing beer because the warped wing was what the highlight was, is how the Wright Brothers figured out to make a propeller that would fly. So, I then find out that what he really likes is Bombay Sapphire Gin. So, 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 you know, it was a nice gesture. But, he, he wrote, he gave a story, um, you know, after, after he wrote the Wright Brothers book. He then wrote a book about, it's called The Pioneers. And it's about the Northwest Ordinance of seventeen eighty-seven and the founding of this, of Ohio, because they pretty much started in Marietta, Ohio and started working their way northwest. But, uh, I, it is June of twenty nineteen, he talked about this book in an event in Columbus and Governor Dewine, Governor Strickland, Governor Taft were all in attendance. He closed his talk with an excerpt from a speech he gave at Ohio University in two thousand and four. And it's as important now as it was then. And I really think that that book, The Pioneers ought to be required reading in our, in our high schools or junior highs, and I don't believe it is, but it really should be. "When bad news is riding high and despair in fashion, when loud mouths and corruption seem to own center stage, when some keep crying that the country is going to the dogs, remember, it's always been going to the dogs in the eyes of some and that ninety percent or more of the people are good people, generous-hearted, law-abiding, good citizens who get to work on time, do a good job, love their country, pay their taxes, care about their neighbors, care about their children's education, and believe rightly, as you do, in the ideals upon which our life was founded." And I, that's been a very inspirational, uh, talk for me and I, I, I miss him. And I think that all of you in here, you know, follow those, those ideals and the fact that you're even in public service, I think, is a testament to, to all of, all of you. And I, I'm looking forward to meeting more of you today and, and serving with you. So, well, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you.